Morning, everyone. We're gonna get started now. Have quiet, please. Members will take their seats and visitors and guests, please retire behind the rail. We have a quorum and we will get started. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Elder Kay Rose Samuel Evans of Metropolitan Baptist Church. She is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Blondale Reynolds Brown. I'd ask all guests and visitors and members to please rise.
Giving honor to our God, a God who sits high but looks low. I stand here, oh God, in the name of God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit. I stand, God, having been given this divine assignment for this appointed time through your servant leader, Councilwoman at Large Blondale Reynolds Brown, and for this privilege, I say thank you. I stand here, God, at a time and moment in history, in this month of March, on this 19th day in the year 2015, in which the accomplishments of women are being acknowledged. Therefore, I thank you, God, for women who helped to lead this city and serve on this council, women in the personalities of Marion Itasco, Maria Cionis Sanchez, Cindy Bass, my council representative Janie L. Blackwell, and of course Blondale Reynolds Brown. Then, God, because there are heartprints and handprints and footprints that have left a legacy of leadership in this city, I lift up the spirits of the council of Ethel Allen, Happy Fernandez, and Augustus Clark, women whom I had the privilege to admire and learn from. God, now you know I stand before a council which consists of ten elected district representatives, seven at-large council members. God, I ask your blessings on each of them, for they are your chosen servants to lead this city who is in dire need of strong and righteous leadership. And then, God, I stand before the people who come week after week on this Thursday morning with the hopes of knowing that you are still a God who sits on the throne. They hope with expectation and anticipation that this council, whom they have given their vote of confidence, will enact and pass bills with godly consciousness. God, I know this council is charged with building a first-class city where all mankind, irrespective of race, religion, gender, creed, sexual orientation, can live together in peace and prosperity. And so I pray, oh God, that the laws will be enacted as the prophet Amos proclaimed, "Let justice roll down like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream." And then, oh God, I pray that the politicians and the preachers and the law enforcement entity can sit down and work together for the betterment of the city, for they have all been charged with the welfare of people. Now, God, I know and understand that according to your word, the poor will always be among us on this earth, yet, God, I pray that equal attention, resources, and opportunities be given by this council to neighborhoods such as the one that I come from called Mantua, and neighborhoods all around the city be given the same attention as what is called and known as the center of our city. God, I ask that while you continue to bless the high skyscrapers that look over the low skyscrapers, that they too all will be blessed for the betterment of this city. Now, God, I stand with the knowledge and understanding, the work of council requires the skills of negotiation through deal-making, but, oh God, I pray that your righteousness abides in the heart of each council member in such a way that when they make deals, let them make deals where poverty is reduced, let them make deals where jobs are created and livable job wages become a reality, let them make deals where homelessness ceases and hunger goes away that also ends drugs that will transform innocent children from turning into street thugs, because instead of seeing hope, they see dope and they get roped into a pipe-lined prison. Oh God, I pray that when deals are made, the council will hear the voices of children that say they require and need a first-class education. And as I bring this prayer to a close, God, I just ask that this city council hear the voices of children, that they remember when they were children. If it were not for someone who loved them, guided and regarded them, showed them unconditional love, where would they be today? God, let every council person remind themselves that they did not make it on their own, but they made it because of a God that will have his way. God, you know, even after I enter and exit from this prayer, the problems are not going to go away, but God, I ask that you have your way, that this city of Philadelphia will see brighter days. God bless you all.
Thank you. Council obitaries. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal, the meeting of Thursday, March 12, 2015, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 12, 2015, be approved.
Can I get a second? Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded, the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 12, 2015, stand and approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is a request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Democrats, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Thank you. Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to take a moment to welcome and thank everyone who has come down today to witness their government in action. We appreciate your participation. We really appreciate the fact that you view this important enough for you to take time out of your busy day. We hope that your stay here is a pleasurable one and a knowledgeable one, so much so that you come back again, again. Thank you so much. This time, the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien, who presented a resolution recognizing April 2015 as Autism Awareness Month. With Karen Crivitt and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. In joining Councilman O'Brien, we have Councilman Heenan and Councilwoman Bass.
Please proceed, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to start off by just thanking Darrell Clark, the President of City Council, and all my colleagues in City Council for their support of the Philadelphia Autism Project. It is now going to enter its second phase. The first phase represented a conversation of over 130 individuals, came up with 119 recommendations, that was supported by the administration in their welcoming of four different agencies that are working cohesively and comprehensively to devise the first municipal response to this ever-growing epidemic known as autism. I'd like to thank the assert collaborative, which is, it stands for Autism Services Education Resources and Training Collaborative. We launched the first census that exists on any disease malady in the history of the United States, and I will always repeat these numbers rather than dwell on idle statistics. By the year 2020, we are going to have 20,000 adults crash the system with no services, 20,000. That's when the bus stops and the parents are home and the children, who are now adults, have no place to go. That is a statistic that mirrors every state population in the United States of America. The autism conversation in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has taken years ahead of every other state. We should be proud of that, but through the Philadelphia Autism Project, we are recognizing Philadelphia-specific autism needs and responses, and I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in that conversation, specifically the Library of the City of Philadelphia, Saban Riordan, Sarah Moran, and Nate Eddy. They are developing strategies around sensory storytime, they're going to disseminate Philadelphia autism-specific information, and they will create physical hubs where individuals living with autism and their families can go there and experience a very positive environment. Karen Crivitt, who you're going to hear from, has been wonderful in creating trading and consultative services in this conversation through Elwin, who has always been a leader in early intervention and programs for individuals living with all disabilities, but very, very successful in the field of autism. And I'd like to also recognize our builders, owners, and managers, who are going to light this city up blue in the autism awareness conversation going forward. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to begin to read this resolution. Whereas, April is National Autism Awareness Month, autism also known as Autism Spectrum Disorder, ASD, describes a complex neurological disorder that affects in varying degrees language and social skill development, characterized by challenges in communication and social interactions, repetitive behaviors and movement, and whereas...
In 2014, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention estimated that one in 68 children, that is to say, one in 42 boys and a one in 189 girls in the United States of America will meet the criteria for ASD diagnosis, and whereas the Autism Services Education Resources and Training Collaborative, ASSERT, released the Pennsylvania Autism Census Update in 2014 and found that in Philadelphia, the number of individuals with autism receiving services has more than doubled from 2005 to 2011, and despite increased awareness, many adults with autism remain undiagnosed, misdiagnosed, and are not receiving services, and...
Whereas, Karen Crivitt, a licensed social worker and the Training and Resource Specialist at Elwin's Philadelphia Early Intervention Program, has been a leader in outreach to underserved individuals and families through her direct community-based practice and by providing training and consultation to daycare centers and community and professional groups. And whereas Ms. Crivitt's demonstrated commitment is evidenced by her development of the A-List Annual Autism Resource Guide, the Philadelphia Autism Network Workshops, the Philadelphia Professional Autism Networking Workgroup, and more recently, her video series that addresses cultural differences and other roadblocks that prevent individuals and families from accessing needed services, and...
Whereas, the Free Library of Philadelphia, under the leadership of Saban Riordan, is actively working to ensure that their libraries are welcoming environments for individuals and families with autism, including efforts to develop sensory time, storytime, and other programming that is responsive to the needs of children and adults living with autism. And whereas, the Free Library is working with the Philadelphia Autism Project in our efforts to create accessible physical hubs throughout the community to disseminate Philadelphia-specific autism resources, promote awareness initiatives, and serve as a connecting site for individuals and families living with autism, and...
Whereas, the Building Owners and Managers Association, BOMA, of Philadelphia warmly embraces the idea of Philadelphia to Light It Up Blue, to raise awareness of autism, and whereas, BOMA has worked with their members to make this celebration a reality, so buildings in Philadelphia will light up blue on World Autism Awareness Day, Thursday, April 2, for the first time ever in Philadelphia. Now, therefore, be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby recognize April 2015 as Autism Awareness Month in honor of individuals living with autism, their families, and those working to improve the quality of life for the entire autism community, and further resolved that in a gross copy of this resolution be presented to Karen Crivitt of Elwin as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Karen? I would like to present this citation and welcome you to City Council to offer remarks.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Ms. Crivitt for remarks.
Thank you. I can only stand here today and hope with all my heart that in another 20 years, the programs for people with autism that we're forming today will actually no longer be needed. In the meantime, I will keep creating, helping, teaching, advocating, and most of all, collaborating with all of you. In this city, it is a thrilling time for me to be recognized and to have the support from the City Council to create culturally sensitive, family-friendly videos that will be featured at community library outreach events in the next few months. I want to thank the members of City Council and Denny's team for this honor, and I want to thank my agency, Elwin, for allowing me to be innovative when resources are scarce. Autism is a controversial field. There is no cure, and there is no known cause, so information about this syndrome can be distorted, and finding good services and programs can be confusing. Therefore, I strive to help address this need for all families and especially the underserved. I am honored to be recognized for my work, and I'm pleased to say thank you to everybody.
At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson, who presented a resolution recognizing Reverend Dr. Napoleon Devine and Mr. Don Capia Dennis. With Mr. Dennis and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. Hmm? You got it? Yeah. Councilman Greenly, and Councilman Good, and Councilwoman Blackwell.
During some time ago, last year, we, as a city, specifically members of City Council, wrapped our arms around the Liberian community after a fire where there was a loss of life of particularly two young babies. And as we advocate in the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection, we want to continue to support members of the Liberian community, members of the African and Caribbean community, and today we'll be honoring two individuals who are leaders of that community, who played a significant role in making sure that the members of his community were supported through that tragedy. I would not be remiss if I wouldn't acknowledge the leadership of my colleague, Councilman Janie Blackwell, who stepped up to the plate and began organizing and working with me to make sure that the members of the Liberian community receive all the resources and necessary support that they needed on behalf of the City of Philadelphia, and so I want to thank her for her leadership and working with this community, but also, most importantly, partnering and working with me to make sure that we supported the family as much as possible, and I thank all my colleagues for joining me during this presentation. And the resolution reads, "The Council of the City of Philadelphia is pleased and proud to honor, recognize, and commend Reverend Dr. Napoleon Devine and ordained Baptist minister, and Mr. Don Dennis, an advocate for the Liberian community, for their devotion to their communities and the people of Philadelphia."
Whereas, both Reverend Dr. Devine and Mr. Dennis are exceptional leaders in their communities, and this we know personally and hold advanced degrees, and whereas Reverend Dr. Devine and Mr. Dennis serve as leaders of the Liberian community on the local and national level as founding members of our organization, the Mayor's Commission on African and Caribbean Immigrant Affairs, and as board members of various organizations devoted to improving the quality of life of Liberians in the United States, and...
Whereas, both men advocate for the rights of the Liberian community in the United States and in Liberia through offering services such as interpretation, scholarship, transportation, tutoring, housing, cultural awareness, and other community-related services while fostering reconciliation among Liberia's warring parties and bringing about peace and stability to Liberia, and...
Whereas, both Reverend Dr. Devine and Mr. Dennis have provided relief and support to the victims of the tragic fire that took place in southwest Philadelphia the morning of July 5, 2014, and resulted in the destruction of eight homes, the dislocation of 43 residents, and the death of four children under the age of five, and...
Whereas, Reverend Dr. Devine and Mr. Dennis sought to uplift the emotional, physical, and spiritual needs of the victims of the fire and helped them to reestablish themselves and improve their states of well-being, and...
Whereas, Reverend Dr. Devine and Mr. Dennis are both married and abide by the Bible passage in Proverbs, Chapter 3, Verse 5, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding; in all your ways acknowledge him, and he will direct your path. Now therefore..."
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby honors, recognizes, and commends Reverend Dr. Napoleon Devine and ordained Baptist minister, and Mr. Don Dennis, an advocate for the Liberian community, for their devotion to their communities and the people of Philadelphia. Further resolved that in a gross copy of this resolution be presented to Reverend Dr. Napoleon Devine and Mr. Don Dennis as evidence of the sincere admiration of this legislative body. On behalf of the City of Philadelphia, we'd like to officially present these citations to Dr. Devine and Mr. to Mr. Dr. Divine and Mr. Dennis. And I want to give a special shout-out to Mr. Dennis, who was also an alumni and a student with me as we both attended Mansfield University of Pennsylvania and upstate Pennsylvania. And so, it's not too many Philadelphians who have to attend school in the middle of the country, but I do want to say it's a pleasure working with you and being back on the path here in the City of Philadelphia. Present the citation.
Thank you, Councilman.
Chair recognizes Mr. Dennis for remarks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. President, City Council members, my family, Senior Advisor, Dr. Tobler, and good morning to all of us. I'm very happy to be here. Let me first of all send a message from the Ambassador Jeremiah Seuss Solontier to the City Council for this recognition. We wouldn't have done it without the support of the City Council, particularly Councilwoman Janine Blackwell and Councilman Johnson. And to all City Council members who were there for us, for our people, for our community, we want to say thank you very much. My appeal and request to the City Council right now is, our community is growing. The Liberian community is growing every day. We have people moving out of state from other states, moving to our city of Philadelphia. And our youth population is also growing. And we need to have some programs to keep our youth going and keep them off the street. So, my appeal is please help us to get a building so that we can provide programs, after-school programs, and some mentoring programs for our young folks so that they can have a place to go after school. And those who are high school dropouts who have some programs to help them. Not that they're not smart in school, but they don't have the skills. The foundation is not there. So, that we can help them build the foundation and also be productive citizens in Philadelphia. Again, thank you very much. On behalf of Liberian community, we want to say thank you. Thank you. We'll forever remember this citation. Honorable. Thank you very much.
Councilor Biedis.
Members of the City Council, I'm very delighted to be here to represent the Reverend Dr. Napoleon Divine, who could not make it today due to health reasons. I'm sure he's going to cherish this citation. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you so much. Councilor Biedis. Thank you very much. Before we proceed with our next presentation, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. In my councilmatic district, I happily have collaborated from its founding day with the San Kofa Freedom Academy Charter School in Frankfurt. Over our relationship, part of what we do is provide internship opportunities for young women and men from Frankfurt and all over the city. Over the last month, I've had two wonderful young ladies in my office. I'm going to ask them to stand. Come on, Aminy and Pastel. Get up. Aminy Vance is 17 years old. She's a senior at San Kofa Freedom Academy. She's currently researching gentrification, and she wants to major in criminal justice and business at Lincoln University, my alma mater. Pastel Albritton is aged 18. She's also a senior. She's researching teen homelessness, and she's planning to major in sports management in Temple University. They've been with us for a month. Tomorrow's their last day. I want to thank them. They came into the office and were willing to do whatever was necessary, and they helped me keep real and gave me some new terminology. So, thank them very much, and I look forward to being at their graduation this June.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen, who presented a resolution recognizing Drexel University senior Christopher Gray. With Mr. Gray and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Nielsen, we also have the District Councilperson, Councilwoman Janie Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. For years, we've been hearing how Philadelphia is an incubator of talent. Many times, we don't know that until after kids graduate from school and are long gone on their way up the corporate ladder. However, we have a distinct honor today in recognizing a Drexel University senior today. He's here. He's created a great application, which we'll talk about a little bit, and to help inner-city kids and everybody across the country to have the ability to get ten college, to look at different things. And I'd rather not tread on my resolution, but having five kids and one in high school now, getting ready to make that journey and start looking into colleges, this is a great application for him. So, without further ado, and ready, Councilwoman? I'll start her off. A resolution recognizing and congratulating Drexel University senior Christopher Gray for serving as a role model of entrepreneurship and on the business success of his software application, Scoly, designed to improve access to scholarship support for aspiring college students in the Philadelphia area and beyond. Whereas, according to the National Association of College Administration Counseling, high school graduation peaked to 3.43 million students in 2010, declining slightly through 2014-15, but is expected to rise again to over 3.4 million by 2017. Whereas, almost 21 million students enrolled as degree-granting post-secondary institutions in 2011. Department of Education expects that total of college students will increase 24 million through 2021. And whereas, according to NACAC, the only 54% of high school student graduates from the lowest income enroll in college. While African-American and Hispanic heritage students make up almost 35% of the college-age population, they've represented only 29% of post-secondary education rollies. And whereas, college funding concerns are a reality for most college-bound students and their families. While some academic funding is based upon academic performance or outstanding athletic achievements, many scholarships, grants, and loan programs have become based on income-based component and are critical to making college more accessible to all students, including low-income who could not otherwise afford to attend college. And whereas, matching the unique characteristics, strengths, and financial need of individual students, this app is available to scholarship and financial aid programs be complex and overwhelming. Some online and published sources offer free information to students on financial aid sources. Many national scholarship databases are licensed only to institutions, while other scholarships' search software programs are costly, and...
Whereas, although Christopher Gray was the child of a teenage mother, he did not let his circumstances define him, demonstrating an entrepreneur spirit at the age of 13, starting his own video game delivery service. And whereas, still in high school, Christopher Gray expended a great deal of time and effort in finding and applying to college scholarship programs. And by graduation, he had been awarded a $1.3 million in scholarships. And whereas, Christopher Gray is a Gates Millennium Scholar, a Horatio Alger National Scholar, and a Coca-Cola scholar, among others. And whereas, determined to help other students find scholarship money, as a finance and entrepreneurship major at Drexel University, Gray joined with two Drexel Computer Science majors to help create Scoly, a scholarship search program that launched in 2013. And whereas, Scoly has received national attention by publications including Forbes and USA Today. In addition, Scoly was chosen as one of the magazines, as one of Inc. magazine's 2014 top college, top college startup programs. And whereas, Christopher Gray recently appeared on the television program Shark Tank, where he successfully pitched his business to obtain funding to expand his application. Since his television appearance, Scholarly Scholarship Search by Scoly Inc. is now a top seller on iTunes as a 99% download and is available for iPhone and Android devices on the web. Now, therefore, resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we recognize and congratulate Drexel University senior Christopher Gray for serving as an exemplary role model of entrepreneurship and on the business success of his software application, Scoly, designed to improve access to scholarship support for aspiring college students in Philadelphia and beyond. Further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Christopher Gray as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Certainly, I was happy to join with Ed Nielsen and happy that this was sponsored by all members of City Council. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Gray for remarks.
All right. First, I want to thank the City of Philadelphia, having me, especially Councilman Blackwell and Councilor Nielsen. I think that this has been a really good experience, and I think that I've been in Philly for about four years. I'm originally from Birmingham, Alabama. And actually, my work here in Philly, working with the students around between 2010, 2013, actually really inspired me to create Scoly. So, I'm really happy that the program is now in national awareness, but it also has really been a cornerstone here in Philly and really allowing the app to really help as many students here as possible and also really starting to eventually help students across the world. So, thank you, guys, for having me here, and I really hope that I continue to make Philly home and help as many students as possible. Thank you.
Councilor Biedis. Thank you so much. And the next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those communications.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4, 604, and 2307 of the Home Rule Charter, and today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 150121 and 150124. And I am pleased to advise you that on March 17, 2015, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at a session on March 5, 2015.
Mr. Decker, you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilwoman.
Thank you. Mr. President, today I introduce one nonprivileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
A nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration to these combined conditional fees simple titled to sit on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 24th and 51st wards of the City of Philadelphia.
And that resolution will be on next week's final pass this calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
A nonprivileged resolution authorizing the establishment of the Cecil B. Moore and Temple University Special Services District.
That resolution will be on next week's final pass this calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan. Thank you, Councilman. Chair.
A privileged resolution calling for city council to hold hearings to examine the City of Philadelphia's process and methods for assessing vacant lots and land generally, and to evaluate whether any improvements are needed to increase the accuracy of those valuations to avoid losing crucial property tax revenue.
That'll be on this week's final passes calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascow.
Mr. President, I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I have one bill.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Testing one, two.
Is there Barry White thing going on there?
He's a newlywed.
An ordinance amending Chapter 12, 3000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use of an Automated Red Light Enforcement System to Prevent Red Light Violations by Authorizing the Installation of Red Light Enforcement Systems at the Intersection of 26th Street and Penrose Avenue.
And that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Chiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two bills and one resolution sponsored by all members of city council.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 12, 3000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use of an Automated Red Light Enforcement System to Prevent Red Light Violations by Authorizing the Installation of Red Light Enforcement Systems at the Intersection of 2nd Street and Area Avenue.
This way, dear.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the design and designation of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Front Street, North Street, Frankfurt Avenue, and Oxford Street.
And those two bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and celebrating the 75th anniversary of the Philadelphia Youth Orchestra.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. You really giving me a microphone that can't be shut off? I appreciate that. So I have everybody's attention. I have nothing for you today, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Councilman. We always try something new in this city council. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution calling on the NUTR administration to pursue pilots, payment in lieu of taxes, or voluntary contributions from large nonprofit institutions to address the city's school funding crisis.
And that will be on this week's, well, actually, next week's, next week's, sorry. That will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. I offer one resolution and one bill signed by all members of Philadelphia City Council.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Correction, that's two bills, one resolution, and one bill signed by all members of city council.
Thank you.
An ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home World Charter establishing and defining the responsibilities of the Office of Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender LGBT Affairs, fixing the date of the special election for such purpose and prescribing the form of ballot question to be voted on.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Subcode PM of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code by amending Section PM 308 entitled Rubbish and Garbage to Add Requirements Relating to Provision of Containers For and Disposal of Rubbish, Garbage, and Recycling Materials.
That bill will also be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home World Charter to provide for the creation of an Office of Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender LGBT Affairs to provide for the powers and duties of such office and to otherwise provide for the incorporation of the office into the city government.
And that resolution will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Good morning. I have one resolution on your behalf.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution calling for the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings on the ShotSpotter Gunfire Detection System and other technologies to explore how they might be used in Philadelphia to produce gun violence.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 9, 204 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Vendors in Center City by Eliminating Previously Designated Mentor Locations in Center City.
Referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Northwest Raiders Athletic Association for winning the 2014 Pop Warner Super Bowl Championship for the Midget Division.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one bill and two resolutions and may be heard on the bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia, the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by city council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home World Charter to extend the functions of the Department of Streets by amending Section 5, 500 of Article 5, Executive and Administrative Branch Powers and Duties, managing director and departments, boards, and commissions under his supervision. Chapter 5, Departments of Streets and its departmental board, to impose an obligation on the Department of Streets for streets not owned, controlled, or operated by the city to cause the owner to remediate streets that pose peril to persons or property or to itself remediate to peril, the peril to persons or property, and to recover the cost of doing so from the owners.
Will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing amendment to the Philadelphia Home World Charter to extend the functions of the Department of Streets by amending Section 5, 500 of Article 5, Executive and Administrative Branch Powers and Duties, managing director and departments, boards, and commissions under his supervision.
Also referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Benjamin Franklin American Legion Post 405 for its dedication to Philadelphia and the United States with its mission of the American Legion.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. Regarding the bill, since being elected and being citywide, I've gone to various neighborhoods across our city and have come across very frustrated residents who complain about deteriorating bridges and roads. And they turn out that these bridges and roads are not owned by the City of Philadelphia. They are called orphan bridges or unclaimed roads. And there's been a lot of frustration, and I understand the frustration. But I'd like to see if we can amend the charter so that the power is given to the Streets Department to pursue whoever owns those roads or bridges or overpasses to repair them or come up with the money to do so. In particular, I'd like to say that I do understand about the railroads, and I do question that particularly overpasses and bridges that connect either public roads and go over a rail line or are a private property bridge that is a rail line above a public street that after decades of non-use and deterioration, they've become a hazard and a danger to the pedestrians and drivers in Philadelphia. And I believe that it is important that these private owners maintain these passageways and ensure that they are safe and otherwise provide some type of funding to the city to ensure that we can operate them safely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the next order of business is a report from committee. And chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascow for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Mr. President, the Committee on Finance reports have four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Finance, which is referred, Bill Number 150078, entitled An Ordinance Amending Subsection 19, 2604, Subparagraph 8 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Green Roofs Tax Credit to Change the Requirements for the Credit and Make Other Technical Changes. And Bill Number 150144, entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 2305 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Office of Property Assessment, Chief Assessment Officer, Powers and Duties, by Modifying the Documentation Requirements for Real Estate Tax Exemption. And Bill Number 150159, entitled An Ordinance Constituting the 13th Supplemental Ordinance to the General Gas Works Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1998, authorizing the City of Philadelphia to sell either at public or private sale one or more series of gas works revenue bonds and gas works revenue bonds to refund such bonds. And Bill Number 150160, entitled An Ordinance Constituting the 21st Supplemental Ordinance to the General Gas Works Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1975, authorizing the City of Philadelphia to sell either at public or private sale gas works revenue bonds of the City of Philadelphia in one or more series or subseries to be issued to pay the cost of refunding or redeeming all or a portion of all of the outstanding gas works revenue bonds and other project costs. Respectfully reports that as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Tascow.
I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 150078, 150144, 150159, and 150160.
Thank you. It is moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 150078, 150144, 150159, 150160. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Tascow again for a report from the Committee on Public Health and Human Services.
Like Mr. President, the Committee on Public Health and Human Services reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Public Health and Human Services, which is referred, Bill Number 150090, entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 10, 600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity to Modify Certain Exceptions from Subsection 10, 602, Subparagraph 3, entitled Smoking Prohibited, and from Section 10, 614, entitled Electronic Smoking Devices. Respectfully reports that as considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascow.
I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 150090.
Thank you. It is moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to allow first reading this day of Bills Number 150090. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills, this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee. And the next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that those bills just reported from committee have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be on our, placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on their second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolution and bills are being called up from second reading and final passes calendars today. Numbers 150200, 150201, 150202, 140906, and 150122. All of the resolution and bills are being held.
Thank you very much. Before moving forward to a vote on these bills and resolutions on a final passes calendar, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution on a final passes calendar today, if you haven't already done so, I'd ask that you please sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will be given three minutes to testify. You will go to the podium in the middle of the chamber. There's a device, when a light turns green on that device, it is your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When your light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you very much for your participation and your cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the name of the first individual.
B Savage.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman Clark and other council members. This bill allow, bill, I'm on, want to talk about Bill 140906, which concerns urban experiential displays. This bill allows the right to install very large digital commercial advertising signs to be sold for almost nothing. Peanuts, in the word of Inga Safran, architecture critic for The Inquirer. If the city needs income so much that it is willing to permit huge advertising signs on Broad Street and at the Convention Center, then city council should be sure to get the highest price possible for such signs if and when they are sold. City council needs to be guarding the city's assets very carefully instead of perhaps being swayed by $10,000 in campaign contributions from the developer. This bill allows the goose that lays the golden eggs of advertising income to be sold for the price of a goose, not the much higher value of the golden eggs of commercial advertising. In addition, it appears that some of the legislation was written or influenced by the developer who hopes to profit from this arrangement. Take the measurement that limits how bright these signs are. The 7,500 nits is 50% above industry standards, and the note on one draft of the bill as it is being mended said Thaddeus to supply. Thaddeus would probably be Thaddeus Bartkowski, the sign developer. Nits are very important in measuring digital sign brightness. Foot candles are the measurement you want to use if you're interested in how bright your living room is when you walk in and turn on the light. You don't usually take off the lampshade and look at a bulb and say, hey, that looks too bright. On the other hand, sometimes your computer screen looks too bright. You know this because your eyes tell you when you look directly at the screen. Nits is the measure most like looking at a computer screen and knowing it is too bright. That is the one Thaddeus apparently provided the number for. It is a key to ensuring the signs are not too bright. Sure, nits are not easy to measure. So where is the clause in the bill that says that the sign is installed and the scaffolding is still up, a professional should come in and measure while the scaffolding is still there? When I read the bill, I could not even find a limit on how big the overall sign is, only limits for the video area. And that is, and is Thaddeus the only game in town? Councilman Squilla refers that he signs his art. He says to the Rules Committee, if you look at the three sites that we picked, I think you could agree that all three of them don't have tremendous architectural value. We have a parking garage on the Avenue of the Arts. Well, the front facade of that parking garage was designed by internationally known architect and designer Michael Graves, who recently died. Some of us could not agree that it doesn't have architectural value. Please think about it before you vote yes on this bill and sell once and for all the goose that could lay golden eggs for the city for the price of an ordinary goose.
Thank you for your testimony.
Michelle Sal, commenting on 140906.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, city council members, and fellow Philadelphians. I'm speaking today on behalf of my opposition to Bill 140906. The city has recently spent millions of dollars refurbishing the exterior of the gem that we currently convene in, City Hall. Down the same corridor as where we are currently meeting, we highlight beautiful examples of art in City Hall. In part, thanks to our city's place in history, we will soon be hosting a visit from the Pope, and we will be welcoming the Democratic National Committee for the 2016 Democratic Presidential Nomination. Philadelphia should be on the forefront of progress and positive change of value. Greening the city has ushered in new leads, guidelines, expansion of and improvements in parks, mini parks, walking trails, and an abundance of conservation initiatives such as greenworks for the city, which has made notable progress since 2008 in meeting or exceeding our goals in energy consumption and greenhouse admissions. As scenic Philadelphia has well stated, our greening initiatives could be set back dramatically by the consumption of energy required by enormous digital signage. Bills such as 140906 that support the incre- enormous digital signage. Bills such as 140906 that support the increased electricity consumption for digital signage place us in one step ahead in the greening race and three steps backwards for energy conservation. Other cities who are actually leading the way in digital signage control include Bismarck, North Dakota, Mobile, Alabama, Kansas City, and various municipalities in Illinois. Do we want to stand behind them in line? I don't think so. We should be ahead of the curve. We should be ahead rather than being at the end of the line waiting to see the lights flashing in our rearview mirror. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony.
Michael McGeadigan commenting on 140906.
Hello.
Good morning.
I brought a single LED with me. I can guarantee it's definitely not as bright as anything that people have had to contend with if these UEDs go through. At a recent hearing, the guys from the Convention Center said they were worried that people would have trouble finding their facility, and thus we needed that sign, which raises a question, A, are they competent? B, why does not the Convention Center build, operate, and profit from their own illuminated sign? Did Barkowski buy up all the LEDs? Seriously? Was this course of action explored and dismissed? If not, we should know why. Number two, in all enterprises, timing is key. Mr. Barkowski and Catalyst are very late to the party development-wise. Market East and South Broad Street are on the move. Thank you, Carl Dranoff. Thank you, Daniel Killinger. There's no need to use billboard blight as a driver. Of course, The New York Times recently reported that Times Square, while a success at attracting millions of gawkers who buy T-shirts, is not a commercial success and in fact is becoming a growing problem for New York's midtown. Our newest Philadelphians, by the way, millennials, are the key to Phil—is this thing distracting anybody? Is this work—okay—are the key to Philadelphia's growth. And here, too, Catalyst is behind the curve. I see a lot of smartphones and mobile devices. That is how millennials get their information, not from TVs on a stick, which is essentially what Mr. Barkowski III is selling. Recently, former city councilman-turned-lobberyst Frank DeChico said that you be—suggested that UED opponents move to Mayberry, implying that billboards are somehow intrinsic to Philadelphia. Does Mayberry have the Liberty Bell, which does not ring and is not equipped with speakers? Does Mayberry have the rocket—the rocky steps which don't light up? These are the core of what brings tourists and businesses here and part of the beauty they and we who live here value. I would like to thank Councilman Kenyatta Johnson for seeing the LED—or the light—in opposing the signs in his district, and I would ask that he represent all of this by pledging to vote against these UEDs anywhere in our city. We've talked about who it's going to hurt, who benefits, and how much. This morning, I spoke with a Ms. Ann Kelly in Councilman Squillen's office. I asked her, did she know how much Mr—everybody's heard 5.2 million over 25 years going to our arts groups, which is really a drop in the bucket, and we need money from many other sources. But did she know how much Mr. Barkowski would make from these TV billboards? No, she did not. I couldn't believe this. I said, check around. And she said, no, I know as musk about—much about the UEDs as anyone in this office, including Councilman Squillen. She checked around, got back to the phone, and told me no one had asked how much Mr. Barkowski expects to make from these—from selling our public space for his private profit. I think that's a relevant question. Thank you very much. Please vote against this.
Thank you for your testimony.
Mary Tracy commenting on 140906.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed members of council. My comments will be very brief because I haven't really seen the amended bill. And I have to say Councilman Squillen has done everything under the sun to try to make this a better bill. But the problem with this bill is that it's a terrible bill. And it was terrible from the beginning, and even no matter what improvements he has been trying to make, it's still going to be terrible when we walk around the corner and we see a huge 1,500, 3,000, 2,500-square-foot television screen, five, six stories high, that's dominating our beautiful city. And I just don't see what the benefit is. And of course, I'm not objective on this. But I did want to share with council members that we tried to set up—Scenic America tried to set up, you know, a gateway for emailing you so people could share their opinion. And I think there's a glitch in your system, and so they all bounced. And so what we set up instead was a place where people could actually sign a petition. And to date, we have almost 500—500 names on that petition. And that's just people who have gotten word of it. It is spreading. And the people who—and I think the other thing is Councilman—and we know about Councilman privilege, and we certainly respect that. But our Center City is more than just one council district. No matter where you live in the city—and I used to live in West Philly for 25, 30 years—and I always brought my guests, my family, to Center City. The activities are in Center City. The restaurants are in Center City. It's the place that no matter where you live in the city, we all take pride in our downtown area. And so I think that there is a responsibility for every single council member to take some responsibility for Center City and not just think of it as one councilperson's responsibility. And I'll be back next week, I think, because I know there are a lot of people who are planning to come today, and we didn't realize there'll be a second reading. And I certainly appreciate if members would think really seriously about this and not vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We'll now consider the bills and resolutions. Before we do that, I recognize Councilman Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say thank you to also scenic Philadelphia Mary Tracy, because I think her input into this bill has really made a difference. And I do think that the mechanism for enforcement and brightness are something that is going to be second to none in any other city. And working with Councilman Heenan on citywide enforcement is also something that's came out of this. So I really do appreciate all their help and support—maybe not support, but their help in giving us ideas on how to make this better. And I think now we have the most inclusive bill that we could possibly have moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of 150200?
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple titled to serve city on lots of pieces of ground with buildings and improvements Iran situated on the 37th ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 150200 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150201.
A resolution calling for the acting insurance commissioner of Pennsylvania to find as a matter of fact and law that every Pennsylvania motorist who has health insurance has met the legal requirement of having included in his or her auto coverage a medical benefit of $5,000 and should not be forced to pay for the same coverage a second time.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 150201 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150202.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple titled to serve city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements Iran situated on the 49th ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasko. Motion—for motion. It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 150202 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 140906.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by amending chapter 14500, entitled Overlay Zoning Districts to Add a New Section 14516, entitled UED Urban Experiential Display Overlay Control District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer amendment to this bill. Amendment has been circulated to all members of council.
Is there a second? There are amendments to 140906. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill Number 140906 is amended, and it will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar in our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 150122.
And ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2015 from the general fund certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. The Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance, provision for other grants to the general fund certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squillen, Councilwoman Tasko, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution calling for city council to hold hearings to examine the City of Philadelphia's process and methods for assessing vacant lots and land generally, and to evaluate whether any improvements are needed to increase the accuracy of those valuations to avoid losing crucial property tax revenue introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and celebrating the 75th anniversary of the Philadelphia Youth Orchestra introduced by Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution calling for the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings on the ShotSpotter gunfire detection system and other technologies to explore how they might be used in Philadelphia to reduce gun violence, introduced by Councilman Jones on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
On your behalf, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Northwest Raiders Athletic Association for winning the 2014 Pop Warner Super Bowl Championship for the Midget Division, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Benjamin Franklin American Legion Post 405 for its dedication to Philadelphia and the United States with its mission of the American Legion, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I had the pleasure to participate with the Global Cities Initiative just earlier this week. It's a combined effort. It's actually a nationwide effort, but it brings the Brookings Institute, the Economy League, and the World Trade Center together to look at increasing exports in our region. Philadelphia is in a metropolitan region that ranks 10th out of 10 regions, so we're last. And if we could get to the middle of the pack in terms of exports, we would create 37,000 new jobs within five years. And it's critical to put this within the context of where the economy's growing globally and where it's not growing. And so—